Did you see Josiah?
Hey, thanks, Ben.
I just got thinking. When was last time?
If you can hear us okay? Chris, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can. Go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Hold orders. Planning Commission meeting.
Don Barlow.
Here.
Van Hunsaker.
Here.
Josiah Justin.
Here.
Timothy Malon.
Here.
Darlene Rose.
Here.
Nick Connor.
Here.
And City Council Leo Zonruth Causi.
Yeah.
City Manager Chris Berkman is on Zoom and Commissioner Haley Green will be checking in as soon as she's available.
Thank you. I assume we don't have minutes just because they didn't get done.
They're technically done. I just didn't bring them to this agenda.
Okay.
We'll bring them to your regular meeting.
Okay, so. Our only role in business tonight is continue discussion on the commercial and industrial. Zoning ordinance updates and you want to start us off with a ramble? Chris or? I assume we read your memo.
Yeah, so. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read through the memo a little bit. We're. We're basically just hitting pause a little bit and I think the big change will come from. You know, rather try to fully. Replace the existing code with all new code. We're going to go back to. Starting with our existing code as the base. And take the input that we've talked about. The commission, I think it's done a lot of good work and had a lot of discussion about. Different aspects of the code that was being proposed. So none of that's been lost on me or on staff jointly and so. You know, essentially I'm just asking rather than trying to. Continue to push the development code. That was kind of a remove and replace. I'm just looking for a little bit of time to take our existing code, make the updates that we've talked about. Make sure that we're incorporating the changes that the commission wants to see. So that's kind of the first gas because then the second part of this, which I I'm hoping for a little discussion on tonight is going to be. Taking a look at that comprehensive plan. And getting a sense of comfort from the commission. That the. The development code and the discussions we've had. For a commercial development, commercial and industrial development is sufficient. To try to achieve those policy goals that that we've adopted. And if that's not the case, if there, you know, if we can cruise through those tonight and if there's. Policy goals in there that we feel like we haven't really discussed or that we've got other ideas that we want to see incorporated. Into the development code, that'd be good input to get tonight as I start working on our existing code. And making those changes. So. That's kind of where I'm at. It is a little bit hard for me to hear. Just have out some background noise here. Um, I think I'm gonna, if it's okay with everybody here, I'm gonna. Turn my video off and just put my phone up to my ears so I can hear a little bit better. But again, I think we can communicate better that way and I'm really just interested in making sure that. Commission feels like we've, we've got everything or that I've heard everything that I need to hear. Uh, you know, I don't think it'll take a long time. I think a couple of weeks I'll have a draft for you at your regularly scheduled October. Planning Commission meeting to be able to take a first look at. Amendments to the existing code. Uh, that'll be helpful for us. So any initial questions for me on that or on that process? Or if not, Gary, I'll kind of turn it back to you to kind of walk us through. A discussion of the. Of the comp plan.
So I guess I just want to ask everybody, this is definitely a course correction, a little bit of backtracking. Um, are there any questions about that? Any? Women's thoughts?
Sounds like a lot has happened since I've been gone.
Yeah, yeah.
I I would comment that probably that's what you've proposed is a good idea.
I'm in agreement with that.
And I am too. It's true.
And basically. All this new stuff was coming in. It was information in multiple places and it was. Not aligned with a lot of things were there and it had some extraneous parts. And I know myself from writing specifications. That it is really hard to be internally consistent. When you just keep throwing things in the pot, you end up having. Problems and unintended consequences and it's really hard to find all those until somebody. Has a problem with it. And and it just got a little too.
I think we identified some sections that are good. Corrections to our existing code. That that should be drawn in. I think that's that's definitely over the next two weeks that this is looking at is. You know, when, once he and I both got down and went to the same microscope, it was like, okay, that's good. This isn't weird. So.
I do just want to add real quick, sorry to jump in, but. I want to commend Ruth for going through. I mean, she spent a lot of time and just want to acknowledge the time she spent going through. The special condition section. Um, she spent a lot of time and honestly, it was. Her going through there and the frustrations that she shared of going through there. That really got me taking, you know, a little bit closer look. I mean, I've been involved on the peripheral a little bit on the code changes. Um, but I, you know, I said in the memo that all the work that's been done on the map. And the zoning, I think is still very applicable. I don't see any need to regurgitate any of that. The allowed use tables are great. Um, I do have one recommendation there I can talk to. Uh, but again, I think that's all time very well spent. And again, the conversations we've had on the development code are still going to be applicable. We're just going to apply it to. Existing code rather than kind of the blanket slate, but I. Again, just want to thank Ruth for taking the time that she did go through that and I want to make sure she feels like her time wasn't wasted. I, I think there are good portions of that. Specialty code section or special uses or special. Requirement section that are still going to come and play out, just not in the format that we were looking at or the layout we were looking at it in. So I. Um, again, as Ruth and I together, we're trying to pull this thing together for this meeting. It's really when it became apparent that we just needed to take a pause, maybe take a couple of steps back and. And re kind of refocus our efforts again. So thank you, Ruth, for those efforts.
And I want to thank. Malot for, um, you gave me your notes.
Yeah.
And they supported a number of the things that I was feeling as I was going through there, the repetition of some things. Yeah. It, that was, that was very good information, very helpful for me.
You're welcome.
I didn't understand all of it, but.
Could I speak real briefly to the, um, you, the use tables?
Well, you can speak to the use tables, but I think. I would like to let people have some comments because there's a couple of things that. Um, I was expecting to see here that I'm not. So I think we should. We should talk about a few specifics in there as well, but go ahead.
So.
Confirm too that, um, uh. On the, the column for other standards, the chapter eighteen point nine oh cross reference, please ignore those. Do not look at those. And I did, and you will note that a few of them have got some highlights on them. Those are ones that were in the. Uh, other standards that didn't get translated into these charts. So you don't have.
An answer.
Levels of use for those.
Are you there, Chris? Because we're not hearing you.
I am. Um. So just to just speak, the other thing that got included in the packet was just, um, I think it's two pages. We included, we took this from. Uh, DLCD's model code, which. We've looked at before and there's good and bad things about it as well, but. Uh, one of the things that was intriguing to me is that they have their use tables. All combined into one. So rather than having a allowed use table for residential and the residential chapter. And then you get through the resident chapter into the commercial chapter and there's another use table for just commercial. And then et cetera, onto the industrial. They have one use table, which is at the beginning of their kind of zoning and allowed use chapter. And it is one table for all uses. So you, as you see in examples, they've got residential uses, commercial uses, industrial uses. All come combined. The thing that. Makes me gravitate towards that a little bit with us is that we are seeing more and more mixed use. And encouragement, a mixed use, and we're looking for ways to encourage mixed use. And it gets a little bit more blurry for a property owner, developer. To determine, you know, if I'm, if I'm doing a true mixed use with commercial and residential. Where do I go to find that information? Is it in the residential? Section, I'm going to find those loud uses or is in the commercial section and. And where do you look? If it's all in one table. You're going to find it very quickly and you, and you'll be able to see, you know, that table can then point you to the sections that are going to be applicable to you. So I. I kind of like in that regard, um. And just for duplicates, you know, for duplication sake. You've got it in one spot as opposed to three separate allowed use tables or or two separate. Um, if you combine commercial, industrial, so. Just my thoughts on that and I happen to get people's feedback on combining. All three different allowed use tables into one at the beginning of the chapter.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent.
I, I, I agree, Chris, that that would be a, a good approach. It becomes the one stop that if I were doing a project, that would be my first stop and it would answer a lot of.
If somebody comes to the woman and wants to put in a pet daycare, they really don't care about our zones. For purposes, they just want to see pet daycare, boom, boom, boom. Those are all the places I can do it.
Right.
All they want to see.
I agree. I think it's a good approach.
I think our document will be a few more than two pages, but.
Yeah, that was some sample text.
Okay, well, I'll start putting it together and again, I don't think there'll be any problem timeframe wise to. Get a first draft of that out to everybody by your next meeting. And I'm, you know, I'm curious and a little anxious to see. What it looks like too, um, you know, our commercial, industrial, the ones that we've adopted there. Pretty long as well, so. Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and make that change and. If we like it, we'll make adjustments. If we don't like it, we'll, we'll revert back, but I'll plan to go that direction.
Well, what, what I hope this meeting is about is to kind of give general direction. I, I. Hope we don't dive too deep into anything here because everything we see here is going to be reshuffled again. Before it's going to. Be ready for us to wordsmith anything or. Or get, you know. Proofread anything, final draft. So I would like to ask if anybody has any high level comments on. Any of the sections here in these use tables. I do have a couple of comments, but let others speak first if anybody has anything.
Um, under the residential uses, we talk about the residential apartments above. Above retail. We're not allowing condos or ownership of. Those units up there. It's just strictly. It's strictly apartments rentals. So that was something that I was just questioning why we wouldn't allow. A condominium above that as well. That's.
So I didn't infer it to mean that, but is the word apartment is that? Is that exclusively?
It does not include condominiums. The definition of an apartment and definition of, of a unit that you own, which is what a condominium.
Yeah.
Is two different things.
So we should just add the word and condominiums.
I should say just residential on upper floor. You can leave it at that. Drop out the word, drop out the word apartments.
Yes.
Residential on upper floors.
Residential units.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
So that would replace the loft apartments?
Loft apartments is a different thing.
Yeah, I.
Would you want to say loft units?
Loft units, loft dwelling.
Yeah.
So.
Well, would it, where would that loft dwelling?
Well, most loft.
Reservoirs on upper floor.
Yeah. Okay. Alright.
From a. You know, I was looking at from a land use perspective, whether those units are owned or rented. You know, what is the implication from a land use standpoint? You know, if they're rented. Okay, so you may have a little more turnover. So you've got different people living there, but the impact on traffic and. Transit and pedestrian connectivity doesn't really change. Regardless of whether somebody's renting or owning or how long they've lived there. So. Um, you know, I think we'd look for a more generic term for just residential dwelling or residential unit. And kind of leave it at that. And then we could have a definition for residential dwelling that could include. Apartment. Um, condo loft, et cetera, et cetera.
We don't currently in our definitions have a definition for apartment or condo or.
Well.
Any of those things.
And do we use the term dwelling or use the term unit? In our, I, I need to. I should look instead of asking the question, but you know, off the top of your head. Because I would almost change this to all to townhouse units, two family units. But, you know, if you want to use dwellings too.
A dwelling unit means a living facility that includes provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking.
So dwelling units in our definitions. Right?
What's that?
That's in our different definitions section.
On our definition.
Okay, so then that's the term, that's the term we should be using for all of these.
Dwellment unit. Okay, got it.
Townhouse dwelling unit. Two family dwelling unit.
So. This whole table that I. Forgive me, I am, I do have some catching up to do. And I understand we're going to reshuffle all this. It'll be in a different format. But right off the bat, my question was, okay, this whole table. Is supposed to be for commercial shed schedules of uses. It's all commercial on this table. Because we have a residential section. Right. The only reason it's commercial is because there's only C one, C two and C three on that table. Let's just keep that. But then within commercial, we have this residential section. Yes. And my understanding is that we're moving and allow residential. Dwelling units within commercial land use or above. Retail or those types of. And that, and that is the net effect. If you look at all the ends and ees. And so maybe I miss, I don't understand. Some of the definitions here, like we have home occupations, live work dwelling units, loft apartments. All those three, maybe I don't understand what those mean, but. Um, so maybe that's my conus, you know. Yeah. Well, I, I think it's consistent. The first line is really whether you can have a business inside of your dwelling unit. That is allowed. Your dwelling unit that's in a commercial district.
Mm hmm.
So that would already be. Permitted, um. Non-conforming? No, no, that's, this is all conforming for future use. So if you have, if you have dwelling units above a commercial zone and somebody wants to have. Yes. Wants to. Maybe back sure something in their house with a sewing machine. Okay. So that's what all occupations. That's what a home occupation. Okay, alright. There's a section that talks about what home occupations. Got it. I'm on the same page. Thank you. And a live work going units.
Mm hmm.
It's kind of like. One shop with one apartment above it.
Right, right. You know, sometimes it's, it's usually, it's usually within the same volume. It's not separate door, not separate entrance.
Right.
It is all within one volume.
Okay. Do we want to talk about roadside stands since we have nothing in those slots? We did talk about roadside stands before, but not in the context of commercial.
Can I suggest something? Can I suggest that we, we put that off to the side for the moment? Because I think we spent a lot of time discussing that and I don't think we came to a closure. I don't, I don't, I don't think we want to go down that path tonight.
I, I, I. Wait with that same thought.
And I'm okay with none on the C one and C two and C three permitted.
And, and I was going to say that Chris can put in there whatever he wants so we can tell him what we don't like about it.
Hey. Critics the biggest hub in the world.
Yeah.
What we'll do is when we combine these into the new, um, combined table, well, Chris will probably. Um, fill something in there and, uh. We'll highlight it so that you know that that's a good.
Yeah, frankly, that combined table helps us talk about it. Across the board, anyone. Fair enough.
Um, welcome Haley. She's probably still logging in.
Okay. Um. One of my comments is. When, when we're putting this together and really cleaning it up. I would like to remove specific references to types of. Of users. That don't differ in their impact to the city. You know, if, if it doesn't. If there's a place of public assembly where.
Yeah.
A certain number of people go in the door. It doesn't matter to me if it's a union hall or a church or a theater or.
Bank but hall. Conference.
Bank but hall, conference, anything.
Yeah.
If, if it's. If it's going to have the same function in the city. Then it should be treated the same, but if it doesn't have the same function, if it has a different financial, there's a reason for it to be called out. I'm fine with it, but I feel like in some places. There's things called out that really shouldn't be called out the way they are.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's broken down too much and, and if we go look at, at the actual building code. We would, I would include it in a category of assembly occupancies.
Yeah.
Because assembly occupancies is what the building code calls them. And it would be consistent. And again, I, I agree with making some, some, some things out. Um, under the public and institutional, we need to define large and small. I mean, that's just a note that we need to do at some point.
I think we did somewhere else before, so there might be a note somewhere about. We had a number last week, last time we met.
I, I guess. In reference in your comment. We may need to. I maybe write a definition of some of these things possibly.
Yeah.
That whatever this is, you know, congregation unit or whatever you might call it. That includes all these things.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know, but maybe just, just, I, I was thinking of it in a sense of. Oh, well, you know, where somebody's looking at this, where do I fit?
Yeah, and I would feel more comfortable with it being in a definition because then we can focus strictly on the definition. And you could say, for example, this, 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 and this, as opposed to the way this reads now.
Right.
It's, it looks like it's only about the things listed.
Right. Right.
Catch that one, Chris?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me. I like that a lot, so. You know, as we went through these allowed use tables, that was one of the concerns I had is are we, are we dividing things out too much? And as we started looking at the. Specialty code or special circumstances code that we were going through, the forty some pages. It became more and more apparent to me as we talked about even in our last meeting. I was getting some frustration because it was like, well, what's really the distinction between this use and this use? Well, there is none. There are no special provisions. So then why are we differentiating them within the use table? So I'm. I'm a hundred percent on board with where you're going with that. I, I think we can do. I don't want to oversimplify things, but I think we can take a little liberty and do some simplification and bring that back to you. Um, and look for areas where you feel we could supply even more, I think could be helpful as well.
Yes, thank you. And I think, yeah, I, I don't even want, same as before, I don't want to talk at length on that because we could get into it, but if you could. See what you can do and then we'll move on.
I particularly like, um, Tim's reference to the, um. Table in building permits and building code. That and. You know, what fits into assembly groups.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good reference document that I've got.
Yeah, because you will, you'll discover that all of these things are in that code. An A one and A two and A three occupancy. So they're already defined there what they are.
So just to clarify, in these tables, every line item in the table should have a section in code.
Yep.
It aren't necessary, no. Okay, so.
You know, it, the, the section in the code was additional provisions over and above what would be in that section. So we'll have the commercial section that'll have. These requirements for the commercial. For a commercial, uh, uh, use. And then if we have an unusual, let's say a gun range, which is somewhere on this list, there's additional requirements if we have a gun range.
Judge that, okay.
And that's what that, that's, that's what that column will be eventually.
The, the other standards or the reference column?
Yeah, it'll be specific for that item or that group of, of occupants.
Okay, our problem was that the specific.
Check in with Haley. Haley, can you hear okay? Thank you.
Those specific uses were, were just voluminous with unnecessary information and repetitive information and so.
Yep.
Okay. I think staff knows, Chris, we're on the same page on that up then, correct?
Yeah, we are. I think we can do quite a bit of cleanup there. And again, that's. As we started doing the cleanup, it again became very, very apparent that we just didn't need to be differentiating all these different uses. That weren't really different uses. They were just. Different users, but the use was the same. So I think we'll be able to do quite a bit of cleanup there.
Great. Great. And I could discuss for a while the example, but. Move it on.
Can I go down to motor vehicle, Edward? Yeah, I know you added charging stations. We're talking about a separate. Like Tesla has a whole group of charging stations strictly. For Tesla, it's in addition to a charging station that would normally end up in a parking lot. To meet a certain requirement. Or that would end up like we have them on the street. I mean, I'm just questioning the, putting the charging stations in there and what are we going to do? Different. Because I would guess when we get into parking, eventually we will be looking based on.
Yeah.
Government requirements, certain percentage of those parking stalls will be required to have electric charging stations. So I'm just questioning breaking it out at this point.
Well, so at least for your first effort, Chris, I think. At least those should be two separate lines. Since kind of the function and some of the. Issues around gasoline. Spensing station is much different than a charging post. And I would suggest that charging stations be moved into. Parking section.
That's where it belongs. Yeah.
Because you're not going to have all the requirements of a gas station. For a charger in a parking lot. However, we should have some specific requirements for charging stations. And anyone could put them in a parking lot, you know. A gas station could have a charging station, but so could Dairy Queen across the street. I agree.
Yeah, and we've got some. Close by neighbors that have some pretty good newly adopted language surrounding those. There's some good model language out there that we just haven't really talked about yet, but I can. Look at that and get that inserted as well. And I do think we'll see more. Provisions there, so it's probably going to help to just have its own section. And, uh. But yeah, let me take a look at that model code that we've seen. I shouldn't say model code, that sample code or example code that other cities have implemented already.
Are there any other general comments on the commercial? Industrial?
May, I'm going to make one comment. I do know, and I don't, I haven't actually talked to Chris about this, but I realized that. Uh, several years ago, when the county commissioners had an auction to purchase a piece of property, uh, industrial property in Philomos. And, um, intended to put the jail on it. We specifically passed some. Uh, a standard for jails, uh, in, in Philomos and where they could be located at. Not. Um, with a conditional use permit. We need to, I, I feel pretty strongly, we need to very specifically have that in there because that was very specifically done in this community.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look to carry those conditional use provisions through.
Um, I, I have a general note that shows up in the industrial district and that is, is. Public lands within the city, when we're done rezoning, will be zoned public lands. So all the public land. Items that are in this table probably. Items that are in this table probably. I mean, there's there's several of them, we I don't need to go through them all.
Um, is there, are there?
No, public water, talks about public wa- uh, public parks and recreation facilities, it talks about um.
Public utility though.
Yeah, there's some public public water plants which here happens to be publicly owned. But if it was a telephone, i.e. Pioneer, then yeah, it would be on this list. And anything that's owned, that's that's owned publicly, we should drop off this list. I think those are the two that I've got circled, and there's, I think there was some more, I don't remember.
You can drop them off of this, what you're doing is creating a situation where if you have a piece of industrial property. And that's where you want to put a public facility, you're going to have to go through a rezone process first in order to change it to public land before then you could. I'm saying that creates another layer of what.
Yeah.
Um, what we initially done is when we updated them. On occasion, we cleaned those up.
Right, now I understand that, but if we, if the city decides they want to go. And the city wants to put a new sewage treatment plant on this piece of property. Then I would, I it's going, it's going to go at least to the city council for that to be done. And at that point in time, it should, it should, we should rezone the property as that process goes through.
And combined process? I mean, it, what what is the process to rezone, is it really?
Rezones, rezoning is a type four application, so that comes to the planning commission first for hearing and then goes to the city council for hearing. And then there's an ordinance that's passed.
I think that might, would that potentially complicate acquisition of properties? Because I know those sorts of things were discussed in. Executive session at the city council.
Well, 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 my question would be, would this entity? Tell the city, you can't do it. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, what it does is it allows, it allows the public to be involved in that process, right? So it's it's a matter of notifying the public that the city, in your example, is looking to convert or to place a. Sewer treatment plant on this lot, to use that example, or a park or whatever it might be. And it gives notification to the public and allows them an opportunity to come to the hearing and either speak in favor or or opposed to it, and. That's important for the planning commission to hear, and it's important for the city council to hear before the decision's made, so it just makes the process public. It doesn't. It does also give that individual standing so that they could challenge the city's decision. Uh, you know, at the end, it would be challenging the city council's decision. Um, if they testified in that hearing process, they'd have appeal. Rights to land use port of appeals at the state level, so it's just, it just makes it a public process as opposed to. Just allowing any public facility on any type of zoned property, I I think is. Less transparent about what the city's trying to do, or the school district for that matter, or whatever the entity would be that was deemed public, so. But you know, again, the combined use table. Is gonna clarify some of that, right? Because there's gonna be specific industrial lands where some things are allowed. That are, when you look at the table, say for like a park. Well, we would probably allow for parks, neighborhood parks, et cetera, in a in a residential district, but we would also allow for them in a public district. So that combined merged table, I think, is gonna clarify some of that as well.
So Chris, I guess as a clarification. Ever, right now, is every piece of property that the city owns. Uh, zoned public?
No, the city owns the rodeo grounds, those are zoned R one still. So when we go through the residential, that, you know, there's. The rodeo grounds, the piece of property that got donated to the city in North Sixteenth Street, where the veteran memorial park's going. No, there's there's several properties that the city has acquired or or received that. Are public use, but they are zoned. They're not zoned public yet, and so that was one of the updates we wanted to make with the zoning. We were kind of waiting on the public to do along with residential, because most of them are currently residential. I don't know that we own. Other than a couple of properties that are currently zoned commercial, but I think the intended future use is still gonna be. Commercial as well, so it's the residential ones that we need to look at, and we'll do that. Here in a few months.
Well, you, but you couldn't, you shouldn't. Do it one way for this zone and a different way from it for a different zone. To me, it seems like if you want them to all be pu- called public. A public zone because the city owns them. Then you need to do it in every zone, not just residential or whatever. Could, because that's only makes it confusing. I mean, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the need to do this at all personally. I think having public property in a industrial zone is fine without rezoning it. Um, I I think it's just adds. You know, an another layer of burden on the city to even mess with it myself. But if you're gonna do it, you can't, I can't see how you can do it in one place and not the other. And that's all my, that's the only point I make.
Yeah, that's a good point, Van, I I think I'll be able to wrap my head around a little bit better when I'm pulling those tables together. So let me take a look at that and see, but I I understand what you're saying, and I I I just gotta wrap my head around a little bit.
Okay.
Any other comments on the industrial?
Was we gonna, on these yellow ones or highlighted, or we was, you know, say something? You'll be.
Representations, and then you can decide.
Yeah. Change a little bit. Alright. When. Part of um combining one table is that we're going to. Eliminate or combine. You're gonna determine which fields need to be eliminated or combined tonight, or are we just gonna review that when we get it?
Uh, we're gonna let Chris take a swing at it.
Sounds good.
And tell me what we don't like. And probably congratulate him for how well he did, for all the things that.
So keep your copy of this.
Yeah, yeah, well, I always.
I don't envy what he did, you know, it's a lot.
Yeah, I think this process will be easier than where we were headed, so. It's a little bit of work, but I I think it'll be a better better end product.
So the the next thing in our packet is is the economy chapter from the um apprehensive plan. And um. I don't know if anybody had any specific thoughts or comments, but I agree. But we get to have us review them. Um. And and I'm just just by starting, I I think this is what we've had in mind and the things that we've been discussing. All the way through as we've discussed the commercial and industrial section. And I guess what. What Chris is soliciting here is if anybody has any comments about the approach that we've taken towards. Any discussions we've had so far, not addressing something in here. Or or contrary.
Good. I'm goal two. Policy two point four. That for commercial development, local retail as part of the full of downtown state. A project. Uh, putting. Allowing C one and two. Uh, in C three, the new C three areas is counterproductive to that. That's, that's one of the things that I've talked about. That we shouldn't do, but that's a policy specifically saying. It's it's, we're we're planning on doing something exactly opposite of that. Policy three point six is the same thing.
Can you, can you explain two point four, what we're planning to do that's opposite of that? Very specifically, just so.
We're gonna allow C one and C two uses in the C three. And the same thing with uh three point six. Um. I I believe it does the same thing there. Uh, if we were just having C three that was just C three stuff. I'm fine with that, I, but like I say. Allowing C one and C two and C three is. Counterproductive for that policy two point four, because it doesn't do anything for the downtown. It it in fact takes those businesses that would go there and they'll stick them out there on the highway.
So, and can I speak to that?
Yep.
I I agree with you in principle, and you and I have talked about this offline a little bit too.
Right.
Uh, would it, would it help if I looked at some provisions that wouldn't allow for. What we're calling, I guess, like your typical C one, C two uses. To be placed in that C three exclusively. I mean, I if it was in in cooperation with or in in addition to a. A C three only type use, and I'm using these terms in parentheses, um, which you can't see, but. Uh, because I get what you're saying, I mean, we don't want our C three to be entirely full of C one, C two uses, all these kind of lots. The whole intent of the C three is to have some volume, right, some larger. Commercial developments come in. So I think the way you do that is you, we look at the C three. And we put some specific provisions have been there about the size of the development that is allowed, and then that's like a minimum size provision, so that you don't get. Um, you know, somebody putting in a a thousand square foot hair salon out in the C three. Uh, it just wouldn't be allowed, it wouldn't have the size, you know, and so I I think maybe that would address that. But what I don't think we wanted, because again, I think when we're talking C three and and in my mind at least, you're looking at like the Safeway, the Fred Meyers. You know, the bigger, not box store, but the bigger retail stores, and those almost always have. Complementary C one, C two uses next to them or beside them, whether it's the dry cleaner or the hair salon or the beauty products, whatever. You know, those those types of larger commercial developments rarely stand on their own on that property, they're gonna have these little. Side chops along with them, so I don't know, you can exclude them, but maybe you can exclude them coming in by themselves. Does that make sense?
It's 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 kind of a step in the right direction. I I I totally, well, yeah, I'll just make this comment. The idea of have putting a grocery store out there. No matter what, however, whatever else you would allow. Is detrimental to our downtown. And and it'll it'll always be that way. If if this, if our downtown was built up. That there's no place to go. Then you add on out there. But when you add add on the out there, that's exactly where it's gonna happen. It's not gonna happen here downtown, so whatever you do out there. You're gonna preclude it from happening down in our downtown. If you want to develop our downtown, then develop our downtown. You don't spread out the town with more development of the same sort. And and that, you know, no- nothing anybody will, they will uh change my feeling about that. And but I recognize I'm this one person too.
Well, let me, let me try one more argument, though.
Wait, wait, um, Chris, hold on one second.
I wanna try to convince him.
No, no, uh, answer causing his head or hand up.
Sorry, I feel like I missed something, but when is the?
Because that's what it is, I mean, it, well, you do, that's how you do it.
In you allow, you. In the use table, we are allowing some businesses. That are are preferred to be in C one and C two, we're allowing some of them in C three, that's a discussion that we had a couple of meetings ago. And Van wants to force all the business into the downtown core and. Others of us are a little freer in allowing um growth outside of the downtown.
Things that are not allowed, C three.
Yeah, there's there's plenty that are not allowed, but some are.
Most mostly one and two are, I I I don't wanna cut off Chris's response, but I'm a little puzzled because I. I pulled out. My minutes from our April meeting. And I attended that remotely, so I could have missed it, but did we discuss this before? Because this. Document is I, except for some side notes on the Word document from. CW, so I gather that's Chris. Uh, Chris's comments. This appears to be identical to the document that was attached to our packet today.
Yeah, yeah, he brought this before us just so that we could review it in context, so that then could make the comment he just made.
Okay, like, yeah, I think.
Good job, Chris.
Well, what triggered my memory was Van's comment, because I I don't remember a lot of that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so so this is just here so that we can say is what we're doing in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
Gotcha, sorry, Chris.
I.
So.
Go ahead, Chris.
So the, I guess the last argument I make here, and I I might not convince Van, but. I might have talked to him offline a little bit, but uh. Uh, and I again, I totally get that, we want the downtown to be robust, I mean, a lot of the things that we're doing are to get a robust downtown, get the businesses there, so I. I totally understand Van's hesitation, and I understand where he's coming from. However, I I think we really limit. C three development. If we're not going to allow for anything other than a select few big retailers to be out in that C three, and we expect that. Um, you know, of, for example, a Fred Meyer, I'll just throw an example out there because people are familiar. If we expect that just a Fred Meyer's gonna go in there. As opposed to a savvy investor or developer that's gonna go in there and they're gonna buy that property and they're going to develop. A large complex that's got multiple tenants in there, they're gonna want a big anchor tenant, but they're also gonna want other tenants, and the only thing that we have. In town we can point to is the True Value Site, which has one owner with one large facility, several smaller facilities to complement that. Because no developer or property owner wants to be completely all in with one use. They're gonna want multiple tenants, and they're not gonna be able to land multiple large retail tenants. For, I think for our best path forward to get our three, or excuse me, C three to develop. Is to allow for a property owner or a developer. To come in with a development plan that has a large retailer and multiple smaller retailers that are gonna complement that larger one. I I just think that not doing that is going to limit our ability to develop those C three sites, so. But you know, that's what we're writing in, I I, you know, we can have different opinions from the planning commission, but I think that's the way that I'm gonna write it and kind of, that's the way that the art, the. The tables are going to read. Again, I I will look at some minimum. Building size or minimum development size in that C three that. Will kind of require that, because I do share Van's concern that I don't want our C three to get chopped into a whole bunch of tiny little. C one, C two type uses, and we've missed the opportunity, and now we don't have any big open space for a large C three. Specific business to come into, so I do understand the concern, let me take a look at some minimum. Development size type language that might be able to help with that.
Okay. To be continued.
I have a goal, one policy, one point four, talking about parking. And I I know I've said this before, you know, I start looking at. At in particular, I I'm gonna use Van's concern about downtown. Um. I really think we need to look at the commercial. Properties. And the parking that's going to be required for that at the same time. Rather than, because. The reality is, is the vast majority of the people that are gonna be using our downtown. Are going to be arriving by a motor vehicle. That's the way it is today, that's the way it's going to be. In sometime in the future, in twenty, thirty, forty years, we may have enough mixed use. And dense enough population in that section, which is what our goal is. But. To make a, to have a downtown succeed. You need to provide access, and the vast majority of the access is going to be by motor vehicle. So I'm I'm just, I just wanna, looking at that as one of the policy goals here. Uh, we're we're we keep pushing it to the side, and I have, I have grave concern over that because we will have completed. we will have completed requirements for C one and C two lots and not even looked at parking in the scene when you overlay the parking on it. With the other requirements we've put in place, we create again unbuildable lots, so we're no better off than we are today.
So it seems to make sense that sometime in the near future, we'd have a meeting that's dedicated to parking across the board.
This is where the Well, and we've got, we have parking requirements for our commercial currently in our current code. And again, we haven't looked at current code in several months, so that'll show up, because you'll get a redlined version of the current code with the changes we're making, and so you'll see those, and, you know, not to go too far down this hole, but the state has made some requirements within the climate friendly area on parking that we're gonna have to reflect in our development code. Um, and we've got some, again, different provisions in C one than we have in C two. Um, so again, I, I, I think we can have a more healthy conversation about this when we've got our current code with the provisions and the changes redlined, um, in front of us. I think that's a better discussion here for a few weeks, but I can definitely set the table and, and prepare for that discussion.
Good, thank you. But, but I think when we do that, I would really like to hit both commercial and residential parking all at once. Because the reality is a lot of the parking that's gonna be available for our downtown core zone is gonna be a block and a half away in front of a residential.
Yeah. Yeah, well, well, we'll specifically look at the climate friendly area requirements that the state's put on parking, because what essentially what the state is saying is you need to have fewer requirements for parking in these climate friendly areas, because we don't want people in their vehicles. Well, that's great if you live in downtown Beaverton or Portland, but it doesn't work so well for the smaller communities where by and large people are getting a car to get to downtown. We do have our bus. We are gonna be more bike friendly than we are today, uh, here in another year when the streets get projects done. But the reality is people have to come from somewhere, and they're typically coming by way of cars. So I totally get that. You know, at the same time, we're beefing up and looking at our, our downtown on-street parking and where we can maximize on-street parking as well. Um, but yeah, again, I think that's a good discussion, so I can, I would definitely look at any of the allowed uses in those commercial zones, which includes residential. We'll look at those parking requirements for each of those uses, and I'll prepare that for next time.
Oh, I, I'm not gonna refrain from beating my dead horse. Um, I don't feel like I can have that conversation until we can talk also about where we're going with parking requirements in the residential zone, because there's some things in there that are on, on the property required parking versus on-street parking. And I think, you know, just for example, what the requirements are gonna be in some of our newer R two and R three parking and on, on the prop, private property versus on the street, and how quickly that will fill up with much growth at all. Cause right now it's very open, but I'd like to look at it comprehensively to think about how much parking there is gonna be on the street. One block off Main.
When you say residential, are you talking residential use within the commercial district? Or are you talking residential use within residential districts?
Residential districts.
Adjacent.
Adjacent to commercial. Because our core is a strip down Main and Applegate, and a lot of that available parking is, you know, for, for larger businesses. I mean, I, I live on College and, and when Timbertown gets real busy on a Saturday morning, those cars spill down fifteenth and even onto College.
Over there.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
And that's what happens when a, when the downtown gets busy. So I, I think I wanna look at that, talk about it.
But that's good.
It is good. It is good. But, but, but we need not, we need to not pin ourselves in from both directions.
No, no, yeah, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't even have thought that was an issue.
Well, the, the timing is good. Again, I know I'm talking about things we haven't talked about a whole lot with the commission, but the climate friendly areas provisions that we've been given from the governor's office. We, we haven't determined where that area is going to be, but we're pretty limited on where it can be. I mean, we have a couple of options, a street this way or a street that way, but essentially, the way the rules have been written, we're going to have a climate friendly area overlay zone within a part or most of our downtown area, and those parking restrictions, or better said, the restrictions against parking requirements are going to be part of our code, so. Again, I'll prepare that, and that's gonna be within that area, and it's going to be mostly commercial, but I believe there's a little bit of residential, some R two that'll be engulfed inside of that climate friendly, um, overlay area, so. And again, we haven't talked about that yet, so I don't wanna go too far into details, but I'm, I'm aware of it. Let's get it down on paper and if we need to have the discussion on a couple of occasions to get through that, that's fine.
Any other comments on this, how, how we're doing following the comprehensive plan in regards to economies?
Um, I just this will happen when we get the table and all after Chris is done, but I think we need to look really hard at policy three point three to make, we're not we're not, um, doing things that's gonna exclude those things, especially or someplace else. I think there was talking about wood product and secondary manufacturing, since we're we're in a timber, somewhere it said, you know, increasing the timber production or, I can't remember the exact term.
Um, allowing for
Yeah, we'll go, actually, policy one point one, the end of, including traditional employers like lumber and wood product production. Growing personals and the growing personals are, like, we need to really look at look at in our industrial zone as we do it, to make sure that we are meeting this policy one point one as far as those uses are concerned, and we're not creating something that there's no way that these people can economically grow, because that's really, this is an economical growth. This is to grow economically. And we're supposed to be balancing that with other requirements, including maybe landscape and setbacks and things like that. So, you know, we, we, we've got to balance the two. And I'm not sure that we, we have looked at it in a balanced way. We have to look at them together.
That's for causing.
I don't wanna reopen that, a can of worms, but I'm just wondering with respect to Van's concerns and perhaps this is already the case, but in small businesses who choose to locate downtown instead of in association with a large enterprise. Can they be given some preferential treatment? To encourage them coming down?
Well, currently, there's no parking requirements for them, so that's a huge incentive.
We'll have all the pretty landscaping, Timbertown scenery to draw pedestrian traffic.
They have a ton of parking in front of Fred Meyers, so who cares?
Uh, that developer is gonna pay for that parking out in C three though. I mean, we'll have those parking restrictions there, so it'll look different. But, um, I mean, it's a good point of other types of incentives, um. Yeah, that's worth looking at.
And, and, and again, I'm gonna go back, because I mean, we're looking at this economic document. The cost of the rents to the individual businesses in downtown versus the cost of renting in a C three is gonna have a major impact. And I, I have heard since I first came here five years ago, rumblings that there were businesses that were in downtown that moved out of downtown because of the cost of rents. Now, I want nothing to do with rent control, so when you make that totally nothing to do with that, but we've got to look at at somehow making it so that the building owners have an incentive because to keep the rates, rentals on par or better than if we do a C, we have a C three. That, again, that's what's going to drive people to go. And, you know, I understand that the farms, antiques, the reason why she's out where she's out down, down Fern now, thirteenth and Fern, is because the cost, the cost of the rent that was in downtown. And that took a little anchor out of downtown that, that, um, provided some support. So that's another thing we gotta, we've gotta keep in back of our minds. I don't have an answer to how we can help that, but it's just when we make decisions about things, once again, if we're creating it, it more costing a developer quite a bit more per square foot to develop a downtown location versus a, a C three location. We're right there, we're forcing economically for the developer to go out to do the C three. So granted, you gotta have parking in C three, so that's gonna cost more money, but when you balance the whole thing, you need to look at that.
That's for causing.
I don't know. Use the term control rents in the downtown area. I was just in one of the most expensive downtown areas in the whole country, and there were empty spaces. But I don't know how you could control that.
Well, they used to do enterprise zones. The theory was that the reduced plus of ownership and, and the incentives would motivate landlords to reduce the rents. There's also contr- contrary studies that say that enterprise zones aren't worth, you know, the game is a work candle. You don't derive and you don't benefit what you think. Of course, we're also mixing in aesthetics and things like that too, so, um, it's, it's an ongoing debate.
Yeah, doesn't it become a bigger problem though, when you have a landlord who owns most of it down, down there, yeah?
Yeah, and I, I think Corvallis is gonna test that theory, because one of the major landlords died and don't know that his heirs are interested in being landlords. We're gonna see.
Okay. Um, I, I wanna make a, a comment on the map. Um, it, it said that it was the most recent revision, um, and I, there are a few little things that I thought we had discussed, but the most significant is the south side of thirteen and Applegate. We had discussed whether that would be remain residential or be commercial. And I thought the consensus was that
We do like your idea.
I think the consensus was to leave it the way it was until we got to residential and have a discussion then.
Okay.
Oh, I was just joking, I'm sorry.
No, you disagreed with a lot of things, but I didn't think that was one I
No.
I'm fine with it.
If we can't serious each other, we got a problem.
Actually, I, Chris, I, I also thought that, I, I noticed that myself.
And it may be, and I might have missed it. I mean, it's, it's the most recent version that I have. And so that it may have got missed in the transfer of Pat leaving and us coming on, so. Um, if that was the case, I apologize, but again, we've got time on the map, and I do think it's it will come, if we, if we solved it now, it'll probably come up again when we talk residential, so I just assume wait and have it when we're looking at residential properties and we're looking for what I think is gonna happen. We're going to be looking for more R three and determining where that's gonna be, and that's gonna have an impact on some of these um, commercially zoned properties that are adjacent to other residential areas, so.
Uh, yeah, I'm fine not seeing a new map until then. I'm just gonna reserve the right to keep bringing it up when I keep seeing new versions say they're the latest.
It's mentioned in the minutes now.
Can I ask a quick question? You were talking about the standards that the state was pushing down as it relates to
Climate friendly areas.
Climate, climate friendly area. Do we do, uh, I'll try to look to see if I have a copy of that document. And can you get a copy of that document? Cause it sounds like we need to understand what's in it.
Yeah, and, and there was a meeting a while back where we were gonna put reference to the website in the notes. Did that ever happen? I don't remember if it happened.
Yeah, we've got a webpage that talks about it. We've had several, several, we've had two or three meetings. We're kind of following about a month behind Corvallis and Albany. Um, and their public outreach and what, and whatnot, so we've we've got about a year before we need to start putting proposals together and where our climate friendly border is going to be. And we're still getting updated administrative guidance on what was meant and what the new rules are going to be. Um, this is coming straight from the governor's office, so we can, we can get you the actual language and we can start taking a look, but my, my goal is to get it incorporated into our code. And it's, I mean, I've said this before, there's a lot of it is not that different than what we currently had in like our C one zone. But there's a little bit that is, and so I'll just make note of that, but I can, I have no problem getting you the, the language kind of standalone language.
I remember discussing is that there is a city website that has a link to all those things and some specific stuff to form it, but it's a little hard to find.
It's under our city, city projects.
Okay, and doesn't have the actual
Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Project.
Okay, and, uh, it has actual language, not necessarily a PowerPoint or something else. An actual, the actual, the actual
It has
It'll have, it either has links to the exact language, or it'll have a link to PowerPoint, and the PowerPoint will direct you there. But I'll, of course, even simplify it. I'm not, I'm not, I haven't touched that in a few months. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Uh, it also has overview slides, um, from some of the presentations.
Yeah, I'm more interested in the actual language rather than the that, the, 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 which calls in the detail.
And frankly, it's, it's very new for the state and even the professional, um, consultants here in the plant friendly areas. Um, we recently we've got a project going that includes that, and when we scoped the work, nobody could tell us what it even meant. So I think it's still in process, what it's actually gonna mean, or, you know, where the river meets the road, how it's influencing public works projects. The, the goal is clear, and the language is is clear enough, but how that's gonna translate requirements on specific projects, or even on what we're doing right now is developing.
So speaking of, um, I think there was a couple other documents that we requested in previous meetings that may be relative to the, the areas we're talking about. Um, the Timbertown aesthetic requirement document that I was not sure whether we were gonna create a pamphlet or brochure or, you know, just review what we have, because that ties into all the code language that we've been talking about. I feel like there was one other document that I can't recall at this moment, but we can go back through my notes. Yeah, those may all tie together. Is that still on your list, Chris, to come up with a little Timbertown packet?
Yeah, it's like a downtown design manual, I think is what we were calling it, and it'll it's not gonna have any new language or new provisions, but the idea was to have some illustrations and samples and whatnot. And then point people back to the code language or the requirements are, so. That'll get done. We just, we need to get the code language in place first, so I know what we're building it from, but that will be the intent to come up with a design manual for reference.
So, um, I think we've come to the end of what I thought tonight's meeting was gonna be about. Does anybody have anything else?
Update on our finer search? Update on our planner search?
An update on, um, the planner recruitment?
Update on the what? Sorry, I missed that.
On the planner recruitment.
Yeah, we conducted interviews. I've extended an offer. I've got an accepted offer. And. Chelsea told me, I think they were looking at sometime. End of October, first part of. November, we're doing background checks. We're not releasing name yet. Um, we hire, uh, we use the. Uh, local government personnel. I think it's association now, used to be institute, but anyway, we've contracted them to do a background check, throw a background check and independent. So once the background check passes, then we'll. Make public notice. That we've made a hiring section.
Thank you.
I imagine the background check will take. At least a week, maybe two.
Thank you. Anything else he wants us to do on this tonight?
I wasn't clear on that. Chris, is there anything else that we need to cover in the meeting tonight?
Nope, that was everything.
Did we, my absence, was there any progress on the performance? Language that we had talked about as far as. Um, limiting light, sound, no.
There was not.
Okay, we're working up to it. We'll get to it.
Yep.
I will just add, um. I think I might have put in the memo, but. I have put in for a grant, DLCD technical assistance grant to bring somebody else on board to help with the residential. Section. I think there's enough. Changes there and, um. Even with the new planner coming on board, that'd be a tough task to. Take all that on. So. I'm hopeful we'll get that grant, but it may. You know, getting notice of the award and then. Getting that all lined up, it may push out our expected timeframe on getting started with the residential. But I don't know what those timeframes are going to look like quite yet. So. Just wanted to let you know I am looking to bring on some additional help to get us through the code updates to the residential section of the code.
What's the goal for our timeline as of now?
I think our goal is to try to finish. Commercial industrial by the end of the year and have started residential. Um, and by finish, I mean having it got through the city council already. So. We're a little bit behind from our original expectations, but we didn't really have a whole lot to base those original expectations on. So I'm. I'm feeling fine with where we're at. I feel like we've made progress at each meeting. Um, you know, this meeting is really the only kind of step backwards and I really consider it more of a sidestep and a backward step. So. Um, I think we're doing okay. I'm happy with the progress that's being made.
So it, to clarify, so in terms of a hearing on this. On the commercial and industrial, it, it probably won't be till the first of the year.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend trying to do something during. December. I don't think we're ready. We won't be ready by November. So yeah, first of the year.
I think I saw something.
We had, we had a tentative date posted, but we have retracted from them.
Alright.
Also say with the holidays coming, sorry, had to say that. It's October. You know, you're not likely to have any opportunity for another double up in a month. Until after the first of the year. I mean, you're literally going to be looking at.
Not unless we have no comments on it.
Two more sessions before the end of the year.
Uh, so you've got your meeting on October sixteenth in two weeks. And then you will have a meeting in November, the third Monday in November and the third Monday in December. And that's likely going to be it for this year because I don't see any way to squeeze something else in. Interim wise. We start running into holidays and.
You all are busy. You're going to be busy holidays too. We want to be respectful of your time as volunteers. I mean, this is important work, but. We want to do it right and take a little bit of extra times. Okay.
We went into a store today and there was. Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas stuff all on one on its row. Or one.
You betcha, fourth of July down on the end.
I might have missed that.
Just change aisles.
Okay, well, I think that's about it. Thank you. The city recorded the year.
You.
Congratulations.
It's an honor to get to serve in this community. Always remind myself I have one of the best jobs in this town.
Well, this community.
And bosses.
Excellent as you. Thank you. Alright, well, meeting adjourned.